Brief portion of this to get started. Um, so zoning board appeal to hold a continuance of a public hearing in the select wars. Meeting room at town hall sixteen little street ready Massachusetts on Tuesday, June thirty twenty twenty five seven P M. My application is Sean mean does on behalf of the property pursuant to national law chapter four day section ten. For variance under reading zoning by law section four point five point two six point oh, six point three and seven point four. As maybe to my brother zoning board to construct a garage with a nonconforming backyard and side yard setback. On the property located at eighty minute street says this map sixteen lot two forty seven and ready Massachusetts. And so we have an email from there from them asking if this case be continued to the June meeting. So can I have a motion to accept that?
Accept the request to um continue the application to the June meeting.
Thank you.
All right, all favor?
Aye.
Great. Quick, um, all right, so we're going to move on to case number twenty five dash oh four thirty nine summer avenue. The zoning board appeals to hold a public hearing in the select board meeting room at town hall sixteen little street ready Massachusetts. On Tuesday, May sixth twenty twenty five seven P M when the application of Stephen. Chihame is pursuing to master law chapter four day section ten for a variance under reading zoning by law section four point five point two. Six point oh, six point three, seven point four. And a special permit under reading zoning by law section seven dot oh, seven point three and seven point three point two. As may be determined by the zoning board to construct a two story addition with the nonconforming front yard and side yard setback. On the property located at thirty nine summer street summer have says map twenty lot eighty six and ready Massachusetts. Unless there's an objection, I'll dispense with the reading of the butters, just accept to say that the butters were notified as were the following. The select board, the town clerk, the police department, fire department, building department, conservation commission, health department. Assessors office, engineering division CPDC and the members and associate members of board of appeals. As well as the planning boards of Wakefield, Lynnfield, North Reading, Stone and Woburn and Wilmington. Testimony given before this board is taken under oath, so if you think you may want to speak, please stand and raise your right hand. So I don't know if anyone's gonna talk for yeah, for thirty nine summer street, could you just stand up for me please? Um, and raise your right hand. I swear the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. In response, it's just I do. Great, thank you. Yeah, so if you wanna come forward and give us a little overview of the um what you're trying to do.
Sure. All right, so obviously on the corner. So on the west Philly side of the house is already uh various that was granted that the. I'm looking to extend that uh to the front of the house and put an additional with a master bedroom on that side. So a special uh assessment or uh variance is required for that. On the easily side of the house is where the uh side setback primarily would be. And so I'm looking to put a two car garage essentially trying to move the driveway over to the left. Reason being is safer, um it's more adequate for both myself and my wife and back out. With two car garage and then looking to put a family room and then a two story addition with uh two bedrooms for my children and a bathroom. And so I'm requesting the side the variance of nine feet, which is at the very front corner of the lot. So if you look at the way that the lot is set up, it gets drastically wider the further back you go.
Mm hmm.
And so due to the conforming lot, I need that that variance uh at the very front. And that's the issue that I'm currently running into. And though based off of the topography of the actual land itself on the right hand side, there's no way to put an addition with the leg that's in there. I think that's a little bit of that in the eighties as well um for the uh the addition of.
Okay, uh so you're looking for basically separately a special permit for the. I would say right side of the house facing it and then a variance for the left side.
Yeah, exactly.
Great. Yeah, I guess is anyone where is there anything else you wanna say before you start asking questions here? Okay, great, uh so you wanna, can I start?
Um, I just had a question, have you um explored? Building it going more towards the back as opposed to the side so as to avoid needing the variance?
I did, the problem is there's nights the further back you get there. Um, and so the further I push it back, the contour of the actual plan is truly steep as well, so it's just, it's not feasible.
Will they also?
Yeah, so the ledge is on the left side of the house looking at it.
It's the it's on the back left hand side, so if you're looking at the house, it's the back left up on the hill. And then there's ledge throw up on the back right side as well.
See the left side of your house is uh much higher than the driveway, correct?
Uh, correct, yeah.
I think at the right house, okay. Right now you have a one car garage underneath?
Yeah, and that's not really even usable.
Yeah, small. So have you, is this your first step or have you went to the town about the tree removal and all that?
So I've been trying to fight this tree since I moved in ten years ago, and so I've talked to them about this. Plan and based off of what the uh head of engineering said and the tree board said, this would be the first step and there wouldn't be an issue with the tree.
So we granted it, they would grant tree removal?
Yeah, and it's understood based off of my conversation with them that I would be responsible for paying for the tree and they would be responsible for it.
Okay, also the engineering department. Cause I, sometimes it could be a nightmare moving the the curb cut or.
I, yeah, I talked to Ryan, I think it is, um.
I know you're supposed to be so many feet away from your neighbors, oh, no, and exi- another existing curb cut.
Yeah, he looked at, he didn't seem to be concerned uh with the curb cut, assuming that I'd have to close a portion of that other side of the driveway because I. Certain with.
Twenty, yeah.
Yeah, he said he he didn't seem concerned about that and then the the tree was obviously contingent based off of.
What is it now, about twenty four?
I I honestly don't know.
You should make sure that they will give you another twenty four.
Okay.
But isn't considered full revenue, uh it's a renovation, but not brand new construction, the whole total house, sometimes it. You know, it it's it, there's a line you need to cross for full renovation of of one hundred percent construction. To abide to certain uh curb cuts.
You had, you had mentioned, um. Hold on, let me look at what I'm talking about, never mind.
Yeah, this is what you wrote to ask about, you're gonna sort of forty seven summer street or?
Yeah, that's, that is what I was gonna ask about, yeah. Forty seven summer have, he said it's within the setback?
Yeah, twelve feet, seven inches, so there was a special assessment already granted on that. So I mean, my addition requesting the six wouldn't degrade gate the surrounding homes because there's already a special. Permit, I think, is what you call it.
So he's closer, I I don't know if it was, it would have been a special permit or a variance, did you?
So they got a special permit back in two thousand and fourteen to build, I believe, up on. What they had like an existing deck, I think that's part of the paperwork that I sent over was that decision.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think that mostly applies to the special permits, it looks like they they took down an existing three season porch. That had a twelve foot setback and constructed over that.
Yeah, that's right, so I I asked multiple times uh when the the zoning. Bylaws went into effect, so it looked like that screened in porch was constructed in the late mid sixties. And Reading wasn't able to tell me when the the bylaws went into effect because if they were back in the sixties, then obviously there would have been a variance granted, but there's no record of it. For that screened in porch to, and the the documentation that is there, um it gives um. I think two side setbacks either for the right or the left and for my portion of the house, it just says, I think, uh. A neighbor or land, there's no justification of the setback perimeters there. Can you give me the exact is what it says?
And so, I guess why are you picking on forty seven summer street in particular, just cause you know they've got a nonconforming structure?
Yeah.
Yeah, and 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 part of the question for the variance is how this will, I don't know, make the. Appeal of the neighborhood worse or detrimental and, yeah, it, there's already an existing.
So you're you're saying my neighbor can do it, so why can't I?
Well, I was just pointing at the fact that it was granted, not necessarily that, I mean, but where I'm requesting six feet is at the very front of the property line. And so if you look at where the special assessment, it's like right in the middle of the property line, so if anything, I think it'd be more detrimental to somebody. In the middle of a property line requesting a variance or a special assessment than at the very front of a property line.
Yes, I think this is a little bit different just because, I mean, I think that, at least in my opinion, like I think the special permit you're asking for on the right side of the house isn't a big issue, cause you're. Just doing something that's already there, that's exactly what this forty seven summer street was.
Yeah.
So I think that the forty seven summer street is a good parallel to what you're trying to do on the right side of the house. Cause it's something that's already there and you're building it over top of it.
Yeah, definitely agree, which is why I asked where the, when the bylaws went into effect to see when the variance was granted, but there's no.
Yeah, they might not know.
No record of of that information.
Yeah.
Um, but no, definitely agree with you on that, yeah. My point is it can't be any more detrimental if the sixth of is granted to the neighborhood for part of the variance question.
I, yeah, I I think part of the, I guess, again, so one of the things that um. We ran into a lot of the the criteria for variance is much higher than for a special permit.
Sure.
And so I think that. Since there already was something there to consider that much differently, and so for considering an application for a variance, we have to go through those four questions that I think you responded to. In pretty great detail and that's dictated by Massachusetts laws, also on a town level.
Correct, yeah.
And so I think that. I think that's where we have to have the conversation if we think we're meeting all four of those criteria.
Of course.
Um, I think I'm having a little bit of a hard time um seeing that you're meeting all four of them.
Which one primarily?
Um, I think mostly the hardship and then also um how this could be. Um, granted that degrading from the zoning ordinance, um just because there doesn't seem to be any justification for why. This property would be any different, um I I understand the wedge, ledge actually does make sense to me.
Yeah.
But it it kind of just seems like to me like you wanna build this, which is understandable, um but the zoning ordinance is. Put into existence for a reason, um and so I think if we just grant this, it's not enough justification to say why that wouldn't make it not apply to anyone else either.
That's fair, I mean, the way that the house sits is not even aligned on the plot plan, I mean, it's. If the plot, if the house was pivoted. Instead of running across the street, then sure, I'd have no problem with it. My issue is where the plot line gets wider the further back you go.
Yeah.
That's, that's my biggest issue, that's, that's the hardship is the way that the plot and the way that the house currently sits.
Doesn't really get wider, it just actually, I think technically gets narrower, it's just at an angle, so it messes things up.
Yeah, yeah, if the original house structure was not set. Horizontal to the actual road and it sat correctly on the plot plan, I would have no issue, but the way that the house was constructed. That's where I'm running into the issue.
Um, I mean, to me, if you look at going through these different criteria, the first one is the unique circumstances of the plot. And it it's they, it's not talking about the way your house is constructed, it's the unique circumstances of your land, soil conditions. The shape or topography, and in this case, I would say it's the shape and topography, if there's ledge that prevents you from using some of it, so that, I think you've hit that one, okay.
Mm hmm.
Um, I think you've probably hit the second one, okay, too, that if we enforcement of the bylaw would involve hardship.
Yeah.
Um, because you you're right, it is difficult to build, you know, something substantial which you need um on that lot. My problem is when you get to the the neighborhood because. The fact that your neighbor is already closer to the lot line than he should be legally, cause he got a special permit for that. Um, means unfortunately for you that if you're also closer to that same lot line, it's doubly crowded. You know?
I I I disagree on on the on overly crowded, cause you're talking about one that's at the very front of the driveway in the land. And then you're talking about one where the setback is kind of in the middle of the property, they're they're drastically far apart.
Yeah.
You're talking thirty, forty, fifty feet, and so I I'd push back on on the overcrowding. I could get your point if I needed a ten foot variance where where his special assessment or permit is. Sure, definitely a crowding thing, but we're almost opposite ends of the house.
Yeah, I I see that, yeah, it's not like they're they're right next to each other.
Right.
Um, but, yeah.
They're actually parallel.
I get your neighborhood argument and I I do think um like my colleagues that it's more. Applicable to the special permit as far as being more or less detrimental to the neighborhood. But again, we kind of go back to the criteria and you have to meet the intent or purpose of the bylaw, which then goes to the variance in this case, cause you're creating a new. Nonconform uh or yeah, a new nonconformity. Um, so I think you definitely got the first two at least. Um, the fourth one's probably more tricky, I guess, or I'm not convinced on that.
I guess I would also say too that I think it, in terms of it being detrimental, now the fact that you're violating a nonconformity on both sides. That is, I think, making it more detrimental rather than less.
Sure, so let's take a step back on that, so that paper street, nobody knows who owns it, Reading does not want to take any responsibility whatsoever for it.
Is that Pros- Pros- Prospect Street?
Correct.
Yeah.
And so. Nobody's claiming ownership of that, a tree fell on my property, had damage on it, I had to eat the cost of it, and no one knows who owns it. So I I'd have to disregard that argument that building on both sides is detrimental to the neighborhood.
So in the neighborhood, do you you and your, you and your neighbor on that on that side kind of treat that strip?
Well, this was news to us, then the only reason it came to light is because the tree fell down and Reading wanted nothing to do with it, couldn't tell us who owns it. Um, and they essentially said it's, you get, you guys are on your own.
Okay. So it it's basically a vacant lot or something.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys wanna grant me ownership to build on that side, I have no problem.
Then you don't have a, don't, then you don't need a special permit, cause you're not encroaching on the side, on the side variant, on the side setback. But we also don't have that power.
The only thing I would suggest to you. If you're not confident with the board, what you're hearing and everything is that, I mean, I know what it's like to have. The kids and you want everybody in the room and, but even if you went to the setback, you'd still have enough room.
Say that again, sorry?
If you had to redesign this, you go to the setback.
Yeah.
At fifteen feet.
Yeah, so I I tried with the architect, so the way that I'd have to reconfigure.
You'd lose the garage.
Well, e- even that, I, by adding this, I have to remove a bathroom that's in the middle of my cape and that becomes the hallway to the addition of that house. And so the only feasible way would be to move the bathroom in between the two bedrooms that I'm looking to put upstairs, so.
The two bedrooms are over the garage with the bathroom?
The the new, the new proposed, yeah.
Okay.
Because there would be no bathroom up there if I'm not able to put one, because the existing bathroom becomes the hallway to those two bedrooms.
I mean, you.
Well, there would be, it just would be your master bath, you have to not have a separate master bath.
Oh, I see what you're saying. But.
But the way that the.
I can't tell how much room you have from the, from your. From your uh bathroom door.
Yep.
To. The hallway where your um, where the bedroom ends. How much room do you have there?
You know? Are you talking about my current bathroom?
I'll show you right here, no, I'm the plan, hey. Here's the the addition on top of the garage, correct? Okay, here's your bathroom you're talking about, this hallway.
Yeah, so the bathroom is actually. That, this is the bathroom currently.
I know, in new construction, you're gonna put it here.
Yeah.
And if you cut it down six feet, you still have room to get to this bathroom and get to your.
Yeah, but the way that the architect was explaining it to me, if I squish this, if I squish this by six or seven feet to accommodate it. And then the bathroom comes in, the way that the bath or the bedroom layout would be, it's just not adequate to fit.
Well, the, the secondary bedrooms, correct?
He, yeah. The, yeah, these two would be new, this would be obviously new as well, but where I run into is. And and I I get your understanding of I wouldn't be able to have a master bathroom, but.
No, you will have a master bathroom, it's over here.
Yeah, and so this is already one room, this is an existing room, and so I I'd have no place to put a communal bathroom, I mean, that's the, you know what I mean?
The communal would be this one.
That's correct.
Well, I'm I'm not understanding you, but I'm just saying, if you cut this, if this was shrunk six feet. This way, you still have the same exact layout, except these bedrooms.
The bedrooms get, yeah, they get super straight.
Oh, you got nineteen feet, I mean, right now, you have a huge bedroom.
Yeah.
It's tw-.
It's uh, oh, thank you.
That's easier. Yeah, in fact, if you could kind of hold it up and show us what you're, what you're talking about.
Do you have any cheater?
Yeah, so you have, you have tw- the bedrooms are long.
Yeah, that twenty six.
I'm looking at the plans in front of me, I'm just, I just.
Please hold it up and point at it.
We've got him, we just don't know what you're talking about, yes.
So, this is the addition on the, on the left side of the house.
Right, yeah, got it.
Okay, where the two car garages are?
Yeah.
This is above it.
Yep.
What I was suggesting.
That, that one, that's upstairs, your next one's upstairs, yeah.
He has two big bedrooms here, at the bathroom.
Right.
This was pulled back to six, six more feet.
Yep.
You would still have a big bedroom, you'd still have a hallway to get to this bathroom, I I trying to understand what your, his architect is saying, but.
Yeah.
Cause I don't have the dimen-.
That's.
If I had to guess this dimension, it's, it's twenty three feet.
Yeah, twenty four.
Well, it's twenty four including the lot, yeah, it's a bit, they're long bedrooms.
Well, when you add the walls and the closets, you still, he still needs the door to get into the bedroom.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You just have to redesign the the closets. Which you still have, you would still have room.
Right.
I don't think you're gonna lose a bed- bedroom.
Yeah.
You will lose a garage, though. It's an option, you could, you could, you could take the chance and see what the board says.
No, I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Or you could continue it, redesign, come back. Either present it again, if you feel confident, if you feel the the um hardships all up. Or you can come back with the second design and say, okay.
Yeah.
We shrunk it six feet, it'll work, or you could take the chance and.
I'm trying to think, cause if it.
Hold on, let's take a step back and tell what the consequences are.
Yeah.
So if we vote on this tonight and we decide not to grant it to you, you have to wait two years before you can come back to us with the same project.
The same project?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
So if you continue it tonight, that means that we just punt it to the next meeting, you get the information you need, you come back to us and we can discuss it again.
Still have a.
It doesn't line up, you probably, once you stop pushing the house back.
I'm sorry, could you identify yourself and were you sworn in if you're gonna speak?
Sure.
Yeah, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth is not about the truth.
Say it again?
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth is nothing but the truth, just I do.
Sure, I agree.
And then, sorry, what's your name?
Uh, Eric James, I'm Stephen's dad.
Okay.
So, one po- one problem is you do lose the garage. The garage that's there now is useless, can't use it. And when you start pushing it back, you have the impact of the ledge in the back.
So we're talking about making it narrow.
No sideways.
You're talking about making it narrower instead of twenty four feet, make it fifteen feet, so it's not.
Yeah, you're starting to narrow it. This doesn't become, I don't know if you have to mention what that, but doesn't become proportionate. In the hallway, you need that bathroom on the existing home. That's on the top of the stairs, that's the hallway going down, so to be proportionate, that's the dimension that we need to make it work.
Yeah, I'm.
So you're going through it like three, four times with the architect.
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying with the bathrooms. I think from what I see, the the bathroom is on the plan on the second floor, could be shifted over, seems like no problem, I don't see a bathroom on the first floor, it's conflicting.
There's no bathroom on the first floor that's conflicting.
So he's like, on the second floor?
You, the proposed one that's in between the bedrooms?
Yeah.
That's where I'm talking.
Yeah, yeah.
On the second floor, on the living floor.
Take that left wall ago, right? And you lose, you've got a long hallway right now and you just lose lo- lose part of that hallway.
Yeah.
This is that one.
On the living floor, I have, what's that, the family room?
That's the family.
That's just an open room.
Right.
Yeah, correct, no, no, no bathroom on that one.
Okay, this is where I was talking from, this room.
So currently, it doesn't matter right now.
This would be the, this would be.
Right now is a bathroom up here.
Yeah.
This is the back of the house, so that bathroom comes out and that's the hallway to come down. So once you start to slide things down, the rooms aren't.
Sliding this way?
Sliding this way, the rooms aren't proportionate, everything starts to slide.
I mean, I think that's the exact dimension, I mean, so I guess like, I don't wanna get, like, we're not here to design the building.
No, I know, exactly.
Just give you an off.
Yeah, to be honest with you, I've already dumped five to seven grand into these plans, I don't wanna go back.
Yeah, I mean, the reason, the reason we're talking about this is because one of the factors we look at is. If you really need this to accomplish what you want to accomplish, or if there's another way to do it.
Sure.
So, um, because. Variants is our sort of extreme relief, because if we allow it, it's there forever on that piece of land.
Of course.
So, um.
And just for Amanda, we're referencing A one oh two second floor plan, that's what we're all talking about, thank you.
And personally, uh, you know, letters and statements from neighbors, I mean, they're nice and everything, but. If they sell their house and it goes to the next person, then they get some stuck with something that they probably didn't want, you know?
No, I know, but I'm in the same boat, I know the the special assessment, I, but it's the same situation whether it's a variance or a special permit when you're selling the house at the end of the day. I know you guys look at it differently, but it's the same relation, it's the same situation, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, so there was one project that we had, I think it was at the last meeting that they were discussing the width of the garage, it was at two meetings ago.
That was two meetings ago, yeah.
So like, do we remember what that minimum dimension was for the double car garage?
They were saying twenty four feet.
They're twelve feet, a standard garage door is twelve feet.
For for a single, double, so the double would be twenty four.
Okay.
Yeah, you still have a uh. You'll have uh eighteen feet wide, it would become a single garage with storage or motorcycles or whatever else. Which is better than what you have now.
I, yeah, I mean, there's water seeping, it's not, it's not usable, but I I I do hear you on that.
I I tell you the truth, this board here is great, giving options, I've seen boards that give zero options.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Those two years hurt.
Yeah, I'll punt it to the next meeting.
Uh, I guess like, so just to be clear, like, we did this, the special permit and the variance are two completely separate things, as we're, as far as we're concerned.
I think we could do the special permit.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we haven't thought about it much, but I think. Yeah, I think, yeah, we haven't thought about it much, but I think. Okay, sorry, is there a public comment? I don't think anyone wants to, alright, cool, um. Yeah, so you just like lay out your options, like, the, the special permit and the variance are separate. So, we could grant the special per- or, we could vote on the special permit, I, we haven't talked about it much, but it seems like no one's had as many objections to that. So, I mean, we could do that and continue the variance if we wanted to.
That's perfect.
Uh-
I'll go back to the architect, I'll talk to him, I'll see what options he has, and then I'll come back and stake my case.
Okay, so if you, if they were hypothetically grant the special permit, and then say come back and whether they deny or you withdraw the variance, would that affect the other work that you're doing?
That's a question.
Because if you, if you get approval for that and then you change it, just say like-
If you're coming back anyway, you may wanna keep the special permit-
Yeah.
as part of it, rather than do it piecemeal.
So, when you, so-
Nothing would change on the right-hand side of the house, I suppose. If you granted it, nothing's gonna, like, that, at one po-
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sure.
Hypothetically, I come back here, architect, you guys vote, you, you don't approve the variance here. The special, is it the special permit?
Yeah.
The special permit, hypothetically, if I was to, if somebody was, if I was to sell the house, somebody buys it, they knock the house down and keep that special permit foundation, does that get granted, or would, would I be able to keep that foundation?
They would have to keep the whole foundation.
That's it.
No, y- you could rebuild on an existing foundation. They'd have to leave, I think, a wall up or something.
Yeah, but I, I could theoretically take down the entire portion of the house and keep that.
So, you think that would end up being at the dis- if they, a previous person was to come in, that would be at the discretion of the building commissioners' decision, whether or not they believe you would have to come to the board?
Yeah.
But reality, if you, if we grant you the special permit-
Yeah.
And you, and you go to the fifteen feet there, you don't have to come back.
No, 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 I get that, but hypothetically, say you grant me this special permit.
The streets here, right?
Yeah, say you grant me this special permit for the second bedroom master bathroom, and I knock down this portion of the house and rebuild it. Am I still grandfathering with the special permit to do as I please with this? That's a question for building.
Talk, talk to the, like, there's a percentage.
Yeah.
But I, wha- what kind of foundation do you have there? Stone, no?
Concrete, uh, concrete.
Oh, it is? You wouldn't be able to reuse it? I'm just asking.
I think it's like somewhat destructionary, yeah.
Yeah, I would ask that, for sure.
Alright.
I mean, the po- the point, the special permit is easier to get because you already have a non-conforming use and you're not increasing the non-conformity at all. But if you are seen to abandon the non-conformity by knocking down the house and you're no longer doing it, and how mu- depending on how much time passes, depending on, you know, other things, it would be taking-
I know, just saying, I've done it.
Yeah, I mean, I keep a wa- I'll keep a wallet, hypothetically, I'm saying.
Just to keep that, uh, line there.
Yeah.
It could be done.
Okay.
But-
Yeah.
I don't wanna say yes a hundred percent, cause I think there's a percentage. Or just talk to the building department, they'll give you definitely.
So, you're coming back here?
I think I would just suggest that-
Just the building department?
No, we could, no, we can vote on that.
We could vote on the special permit today.
Okay.
But since you're coming back in June anyway, I think you're getting the idea here that the special permit isn't really giving us much trouble.
Yeah, of course.
Um-
So, if we technically could issue them separately, just for the simple fact that it's-
Same application.
Same application.
So, I went through this and asked if I should do it separately or not for this specific reason, and they said, please, it makes sense to do it together.
Okay. I would say, I would say there's no harm in keeping it together, un- unless you-
It sounds like the special permit isn't the, isn't the issue anyways.
Yeah, that's not the issue.
Okay.
Unless you wanted to go ahead and start construction on that part of it, regardless of what happens to the other part.
Sure, so once a special permit is, is granted, how long is that in effect for to, to finish the construction?
I think you have to start within a year or something.
Yeah.
A year.
Okay.
A year.
Yeah.
Alright.
So, if he came back, and he come, and he-
Come back with the whole application.
But, but the news, the new one?
I mean, I'll come back with some different plans from the architect, see what he's coming up with. I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
I don't have to refile or any of you guys just schedule another meeting.
Amanda will tell you.
Yeah, we'll just continue it to the next meeting.
Okay.
It's the same application.
Uh, understood.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that what you want, continue the next meeting?
But I know, talk to the, uh, engineers. You sure there's no ledge right there in the beginning?
Okay.
Which side of the house are we on?
I read.
Yeah, can I move, I'll move to, um, accept the homeowner's request to continue, um, application twenty-five. Oh, sorry.
Uh-
Oh!
We did open-
What is the disposition of this hearing, is it rejected or continued?
Neat, it's continued.
It will be continued.
So, there will be an opportunity at the next meeting?
We, we did open it up for public comment, but we can let him speak.
Yeah, he got something to say.
Yeah.
You can speak now if you want to.
Yeah.
It'll be on the record for him. Sure.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
And that way you won't have to come again.
Identify yourself?
My name is Jack Williams, and I live at forty-six Summer Ave. I'm diagonally across from Stephen's house. Stephen is a, is a, a very good neighbor, and, um, has a lovely family, and so, it's with a certain amount of hesitation that I speak in opposition to this project. And I want to, uh, speak about the street, the neighborhood, and the building. The street comes, uh, when it was laid out, the upper hill had a line of red oaks. The lower portion had a line of American ash, many of which are still there. All of the red oaks are still there. I have saved that oak twice from the axe. And, uh, those trees give a great deal of, of quality to one of the most beautiful streets in, uh, in Redding. So, I would, I would ask that Steve seriously consider keeping that tree, if possible. Because it's part of the entire neighborhood.
Would you be opposed to him moving the tree somewhere else if he-
You can't move that tree.
No, it's, okay.
It's too big.
It looks big.
Uh, as far as the neighborhood is concerned, the, the project that is being envisioned is far too large. It's a neighborhood of small capes. I live in a cape, the one next to me is identical as a cape. Uh, the house next to Steve on the right is identical in, in size, small scale. The house to the left is a Sears Roebuck house, believe it or not.
Who is that one?
That's cool, I always wanted to know.
And so, it, 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 it came in a railroad car. But it's a modern house with all of the different, uh, masses clearly articulated, so it has a very nice scale. So, what is being proposed is a large, flat, two-story, uh, excuse me, three-story elevation with no balconies, no porches, no dormers, no articulation at all, except for two now, uh, changes in plane. It is a very banal and uninspiring elevation. Totally out of character and totally out of scale with the neighborhood. I would ask Steve, and I want to remind the board, that Massachusetts has both a title law and a practice law for architects. And as I read these drawings, there's no architect involved. You can't refer to somebody as an architect unless they are a registered architect.
He is, he's a legal architect. Benchmark survey? Benchmark does the survey, Jeffrey Allen.
Jeff Allen.
Jeff, Jeffrey Allen is an architect?
Yes.
He's, he doesn't say it.
He doesn't have the written certified.
He may call himself an architect, but that's against law. Regardless, I would ask-
I think good to have him stamp it either.
Sure, I'll have him stamped, no problem.
It, 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 it's-
May I, may I speak?
Uh, I just wanna let him finish it.
Yeah, let him finish.
Yeah, so, a- and so, I say all of these things because I feel that, that there is an alternative, and that's the envelope of space behind the house. And that there is no hardship here. And that, in fact, uh, that part of the lot, uh, is, is eminently buildable. Uh, might not be in the confirmation that they have envisioned at this point, but I don't see a hardship at all. Okay? So, I would, I would like to know what the status is at this moment. Is there gonna be a continuation?
The status is-
Do I need to come back?
I mean, we'll, we'll give you a chance to, to speak again, to respond to him, but the status right now is that he asked us to continue it to June. I was about to make a motion to accept that, which means that this application, I think he's gonna make some amendments to the plan, but as amended, we pick up where we left off.
And now, will you be sending out to the butters the same information?
It does not get sent out yet. Oh, you, you can get a copy of that from Town Hall, if he makes amendments.
Yeah, so typically, when someone makes like amendments to the plan, they're supposed, they need to submit them to me prior to the meeting, and then I will upload them to the website as well. Or if you wanna come take a look at them, you're more than welcome to come into the office and take a look at it as well.
I'll, I'll do that, because it, it could be that many of the issues that I've just mentioned have gone, or it could be that there's, some of them are still there.
You're not gonna get in a butters list in the mail, though, just so you know, for, for the next meeting.
And I can, I can, we, I can get the, the date of the, of the-
And typically, what I also try to do is I try to post the agenda the week before the meeting.
Yeah, 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 no, I, I-
So that you're aware of.
I, I, I used to be on the historic commission.
Okay.
So, I know all the, I know the stuff. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good, go ahead.
Yep.
So, I understand his, uh, his concern with the tree. Um, as far as it relates to the overall neighborhood, Pierre, how big's your house? It's definitely not a cape.
In terms of size?
Yes.
Uh, I think it's about sixteen hundred feet square.
Could, could you identify yourself, please?
Oh, sure, yes. So, um, here, I live in, at forty-six Summer, so I'm the owner of the house with a little setback, and, uh, what else do I need to do, I need to, to square.
Uh, yeah, yeah, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth, and just, I do.
Is, is, total house sixteen hundred square feet?
Yeah.
Elevation from the street to the top of your house, much higher than my proposed.
That, I, I doubt it.
And Jack, you know that, you stare at my house, you know his. His isn't, his is completely different than anyone else's in the entire neighborhood.
That's true.
So, to, to pick out, not to mention the drawings that I had as far as, uh, designed for the outside of the house, that had to get done for, uh, for the hearing. That's subject to change, it's certainly not gonna be a straight sixty-foot, foot house, I can tell you that, right off the bat.
All I can react to is the drawing.
Well, that's fine, you guys don't have to talk about each other's houses.
No, no, but-
You, you can do what's in your right, you're here.
Sure, but, but my point is, the, the, the proposed addition is no different than what the neighbor to the right of me has, and so, that, that's not a fair argument, and you know that.
I, I-
Well-
Gentlemen, we're not gonna talk about each other's houses.
Don't, don't speak to each other, just, just-
It's not a fair argument, it's not apple and-
Cut it down six feet, you could, you could build your addition, so you're within your right, you can do whatever you want.
As, as for the tree, I've been fighting for this tree for the last ten years. It's destroyed every car I've had from sap. It's, it's a, it's a serious issue backing out, it has a complete blind spot as you come around, it's just, it's a safety hazard, to be honest with you.
Just before you go forward, I advise you, make sure you have confirmation, the tree and the, the curb cuts.
Yeah, no problem. So, just get it in writing from the engineering guy and-
I would, you send your waste, throw your money, and then you'll have an S driveway.
Yeah, no, of course, yeah.
That's not, that's not relevant for our purposes, I think he's just getting your advice more broadly.
Okay.
No, I appreciate it.
So, do you still want to move it to June?
Perfect.
Okay, I've moved to accept the homeowner's request to move application twenty-five dash oh four to our June meeting, to continue it.
Alright, all in favor? Alright, thank you. Uh, alright, thank you, everyone.
Seconded that?
Oh, Patrick did. This is the variance, and that's the difference.
Um, alright.
Question, when in June, sorry?
It's the, um, Ju- first Tuesday in June.
First Tuesday, June?
Third? Um, I think the, I think you might have the schedule.
Is it a Tues- is it a Tuesday?
It's always a Tuesday.
Shh. I may be in Chicago for work.
Uh, you can, you can move to July then.
I, I can tell you right now, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's the third.
Uh, yeah, I'll be in Chi- I'll be in Chicago, um- Do you wanna move it to July first? Y- y- yeah, well, let me just make sure that's the date that I'm drawn, sorry. You can always continue it to July later, right? Yeah, Jul- yeah, July third, I'm, yeah, I'm in Chicago. Yeah, if we can move it, if, if possible.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to move it to, to continue to the July meeting, because the homeowner is unavailable for the June meeting.
Second.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is no one here for, for, for yourself?
No, he's right there.
No, podium?
He's behind the podium.
Ah, I cannot see you over there.
He's just sitting there quietly.
I got so confused, I was like- Alright, well, yeah. Sorry about that, I could not see you. Alright, so we're going to move on to case, uh, number twenty-five dash oh five, twenty-sixth River Side Drive. Uh, so, zoning board of appeals will hold a, alright, I spilled my notes. Uh, well, a public hearing in the select board room at Town Hall, sixteen hundred feet, Redding, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, May sixth, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM, on application of Chris Loisel, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Four, Day, Section Ten, for variance under Redding zoning by Law, Section four dot five dot two, six point three, For variance under Reading zoning by law, section four dot five dot two, six point three, seven point four, as may be determined by the zoning board. To construct a deck attached to an existing pool with a non-conforming side yard setback on a property located at twenty six Riverside Drive. To this map eleven lot two sixty four, Redding, Massachusetts. As this objection, I will sponsor the reading of the butters list except the stated butters will notify as will the, excuse me, the following. The select board, the town clerk, the police department, fire department, building department, conservation commission, health department, censors office, engine division, CPDC. And members and associate members of the board of appeals, as well as the planning boards of Wakefield, Lynnfield, North Reading, Sonham, Warden, and Wilmington. Testimony given before this board is taken under oath, so if you may want to speak, please stand and raise your right hand. I swear that the testimony given by any of the board of this board will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, response is just I do. I do, great, thank you. Yeah, so maybe just give us a little overview of the case and what you're asking for.
Sure, um, I do have some, some pictures that I uploaded to the portal. Um, I have my laptop, but it's easier to view on the laptop for anybody.
I have mine.
Okay, and, um, there was a testimonial that came in on Sunday.
Gonna read it, yeah.
Yes, you were able to.
I saw it, but we're gonna read it in.
Yeah, I have that too, if you need it, uh, just let me know.
Thanks.
Uh, so thank you for hearing the, the variance, um, requests here. So, to move back, I'd say, last fall, we went through the proper permit. For, uh, a eighteen foot above ground pool, and at that point, it went through, um, Brett's, um. Leadership for that permit pool, and I think Paul was the person that signed off on the final for the pool itself. So that was, uh, late October, of one that actually went through for the electrical and everything to be running. Um, so that was all signed off correctly, and the permit was approved off of the setbacks for the pool. Um, so with the, the plot plan that was, um, submitted for the, the permit. Originally, the pool was not on there, and the, um, proposed deck was just a, um, more or less a scratch. Drawing for me, so we, we ended up going through, uh, John Sullivan for the plot plan that has been proposed. As part of the, the portal packet, and really what we're looking to do is, um, have a deck. When it, when I, for me, when I hear attached, it means like physically attached to the pool. And what we're after is just to have basically a, a deck from the property line on the foundation line. To the pool, not necessarily attached to the pool, it may like overhang, but it's primarily for convenience. Of, um, my children and my wife to have access to the pool and, and myself. In a way that is relaxing and, um, pri- private to an extent in, in our yard. Um, so for, for the plot plan, that's what you're looking at from the existing pool and the proposed deck. My understanding is with the plot plan on this proposal is that the variance that comes into play. Is the, that side yard setback in the backyard where the circle of the pool. Cheats into, it's still our yard, but it's, it's that ten point two in the plot plan. Um, as opposed to the, the fifteen point four that you would see in the, in the table. With, with that, I actually went through and went around to each of butters that are directly around my, my dwelling. And had a conversation face to face, many times was invited into their home, or just communicated, um, in person. On whether or not they wanted, uh, to object to it, and brought that to the, um, permit pool. And was advised that you still needed to go through this process, so. That had been uploaded, uploaded to the portal, um, in support of the construction that we're looking to do for the deck on the pool. And then, um, our direct neighbor, which would be the abutter on that ten point two line. They couldn't make the, the physical meeting, so they ended up recording an additional, uh, video. And the transcripts that Amanda, um, printed out and did that today, thank you.
What number house was that?
Hmm?
Just what number house was that?
Um, twenty, I think they're twenty.
Twenty-six, I think.
I'm twenty-six, they, I think they're twenty, twenty, twenty. Twenty-two Riverside Drive.
Oh.
Um, so they would be that ten point two with the circles on the plot plan. Um, so they, they went above and beyond being part of that original signature of the surrounding of butters to provide that video. As that was the line in question. So for me, it was just following the, the procedures, you know, coming at it from the right way of approaching you that, for the pool itself. And then for the deck that we wanted to do right and have a proper permit for. Um, so really, that's my case is to have the ability to have the proposed deck. Um, I do have, in terms of the answers on the, the portal for the submission of the variance. I was advised to do the variance by Brett in that conversation prior to Brett leaving, and I think Glenn coming back, uh, in that position. So that it was through that conversation with Brett to go through on the variance versus the special permit, which I heard that word today. I don't know the differences between the two on whether or not the variance would be needed versus a special permit in this case. But for me, what we were looking after is just to have that deck be part of the foundation. It's not going past that fifteen foot, fo- fifteen point four. Um, so for me, it's if the pool wasn't there, and we wanted to do the deck, and then had done the pool and just moved the pool. To the right that five feet, not knowing that that was gonna be an issue, we would have done it that way. But it was more not knowing, and then the pool's there, and now coming into the variance meeting, so, um, here I am. Uh, I think that's everything, um, happy to answer questions or provide the video or whatever.
I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
It, this is, you're not removing your current deck, are you, or, or are you? You're just adding more deck, basically, to be with the pool.
Yeah, it would be a separate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, have you explored the possibility of moving the pool? What would that involve?
Um, it would be a complete removal of what we just got permitted and done last October. It's covered, it's not even been used, so we haven't explored that. Um, it was thousands of dollars to install and to buy, so. With that, if at all possible, um. At the time of the, the pool being built and permitted, if that was advised to me to do that, I would have. Put that into consideration before building that.
There.
Yeah, um, and that, that space is, um, basically where we would like to put that is. There's the existing deck, and then there's a staircase, um, all within code, and that's been permitted and pulled, and. Um, it, it would be a totally separate deck, only for the pool purpose.
Is there a reason you can't extend the deck towards what I have here is the existing shed, instead of going towards?
The pool deck and the s-, uh, setback?
Can I approach?
Isn't this, yeah, yeah. This is the issue, right, the ten?
The, the pool, yeah, that's a pool.
Yeah.
So, are we look, so was he looking for a variance on the pool? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, the problem, the problem is, the problem is that the s-, the standard for the pool.
Is that what, is that what the issue is?
So just to get every, cause I'm a little confused, so you put this pool in last year?
We let Amanda explain, I think she's definitely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so a pool is allowed, um, a certain distance, I think, I think ten feet. It can be in the setback if it's under a certain amount.
Okay.
Okay.
Things become closer to the home, I think it's ten feet, it's considered attached. So when you put the deck there, by putting the deck there, the pool by extension is considered attached. So therefore, it goes from being conforming to non-conforming, because it's now considered attached, and now five feet into the fifteen foot.
What makes it attached?
The deck.
The deck will.
Gotcha.
I know, but what makes it attached? Let's say it's.
So it's, um.
Let's say it's a foot away from me.
Have.
Do you know what?
Within, I don't know where it is in the bylaw, off the top of my head.
I was looking in the bylaw, I didn't find anything.
Structures are considered attached, I think if it's within ten feet, so by putting.
Within ten feet.
Yeah, by putting the deck there, the pool is considered a structure.
Oh, I did find that one.
Yeah, so by attaching the deck to the pool, like the pool, it's all.
It becomes one more structure, does that also done, does that also contribute to the?
That was in the context of garages, yeah, that's why I didn't think it applied.
If I.
I, yeah.
I don't know if this is beneficial to have, just as a visual.
Yeah.
So that's why, that's why he's here.
Yeah, so it's be- because the deck is attached to the home and to the pool, and it creates.
An attach.
Setback, sorry, I'm struggling with my words today.
From.
And you would have put the pool somewhere else, had you known, or they had told you.
Right, so, with, so I made sure from the foundation to, to the pool. That, that, that's eleven feet. And the setback was ten, so we did a foot away from the foundation, this needed to be ten, it's ten point two. So when the circle was dug out, it was with the fact that it would be pulled properly as the permit for the pool. Had, had I known that, if, technically if I did the deck without the pool, and then, um, the pool was.
You could have put it a little bit that way.
Or less than five feet to the left, like looking this, looking at this way.
Right, right.
Then there would be no issue, so.
Would it go in front of your stairs though, though?
Yeah, so that, that was the, um, so this is a testimonial from Mike, I can play that if need be, but, so this is.
I see what you're saying.
Current deck, this is the stairs, um.
And the other deck being inside.
Two here is fifteen, um, so this is Mike and Belle's side yard, which is.
So the deck's gonna be right there, in front of that small window?
Um, so this, actually, this window should be removed, then there's gonna be no window there whatsoever, just be siding. Um, so the deck would end at the foundation line, and then the foundation to this is fifteen. So really what, what we're looking at is, um.
Is that upper deck gonna be connected to that one?
No, in no, in, in no way, no.
So it's just a.
It looks like this space.
Yeah, so this is another visual that, um, so basically, the foundation line is where the filter is.
Yeah.
That is where technically he's gonna to end. The staircase up to the deck would basically be like a forty-five degree angle. But this would be a totally separate structure from the deck, and it would end at that fifteen foot line here. And nothing is changing, like the pool's not changing.
Right.
The deck's not changing, the deck, what I would want to do is be a little bit above the pool, so it's just an overhang. So people will put their feet in, but not in any way impeding on Mike and Belle's.
I, can I, can I go through sort of a little miniature legal analysis here? I found in the bylaws, the, the reference to pools is in five point five, one point three. Which says that a swimming pool or similar home recreational facility shall be permitted at any size. Provided it is not located in the setbacks, but then the next sentence says, oh, says the opposite. A home recreational facility may be located within a required side yard. Or required rear and setback, provided not larger than twenty-five percent of the principal structure, which this isn't. Um, so that seems to me to be saying that something like that, a pool or a tennis court. Can't be completely within a setback, or can't be entirely in a setback, but it can infringe upon the setback. Because that, um, by law is very confusing, but that's the way I interpret it, and I think it's a reasonable interpretation. Then we get what Amanda referenced earlier, which is the ten feet thing, and that is.
Which is where we got the denial.
I'm sorry.
Five, point one, point one, letter D.
Right, okay, that's under general provisions, and it's talking about any accessory building or structure. Including a garage that is less than ten feet, shall be considered attached to the principal structure. However, I don't think a pool is the same thing as an accessory building or structure.
So.
Because under this other law, a pool is a home recreational facility, it is not a building or a structure. Therefore, the attached thing does not apply to the pool. Therefore, if the pool is not attached to the deck. I don't think a variance is needed, that's my legal analysis.
I.
So Zach's pause is.
So, are you trying to set?
Thank you.
So basically, if you didn't attach it directly to the house, if you had a freestanding deck. As long as it is not attached, it can be right up against.
The what, the pool or the house?
The deck cannot be attached to the pool.
So.
To the pool.
Anything that's within, unless it's the principal structure, the ten feet would be considered attached. So you're saying that if it's attached to the home, you wouldn't consider the pool attached?
Yeah, if it's attached to the home, it's conforming, it's fine, it's within the setback. The only thing that makes it, that makes it infringe on the setback, is the existence of the pool. But the pool, to my mind, is not an accessory building or structure that is considered attached.
That's how I interpreted it, I'm just kind of following the process.
Yeah.
To completion, but that's how, I wrote it in how every neighbor that I spoke to.
Can't call it a building, can't call it a structure?
Like I say, is that in the definition of structure in the zoning bylaws, it says includes.
Oh, it does, okay, alright, sorry, never mind, I tried.
They do separately classify as a home recreation thing.
Yeah, home recreation, when they say that, I'm taking it as, that it's mobile, it's not a fixed structure.
And it's not in-ground theoretically, it's not, not easily mobile, but mobile.
Actual fixed structure now.
Yeah. Yeah, what, where, where was that, where did you find that definition?
I think that's why they were.
Are we looking for the definition of structure?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any combination of parts or materials assembled and joined or mixed together in some definite manner or pattern. At a certain location for any purpose or use, whether or not courts or athletic and recreational activity. And the equipment and paraphernalia associated with any such court, but shall not include fences, garden walls. And paved areas used solely for vehicular or pedestrian access.
Alright, structures include swimming pools, tennis courts, sports courts, and lots of others, that part, alright.
What type of swimming pools, though?
It just says swimming pools, but that's the same terminology that's used for that other one that I was saying, so.
Could you put the deck on this side?
Um, if we were to do that, then we're basically looking into Val and Mike's backyard, and for, for us, it's a privacy.
It's the same thing, it'll be considered.
Can we explain the privacy where, like, I'm not sure.
I thought it was because it was attached to the, um, house.
I mean, from here, if we're looking at it from a privacy standpoint, there's a, there's a tree here that blocks between our two yards. And if it's setback here, um, what we're looking at, there's. The space here is, is basically unusable for really anything else. And for pr- privacy, for being on the deck, coming up and down, accessing one or outside here. Um, sorry if I'm looking at, uh, trying to get another photo. So this is our, the current deck, it would just be, access would be here on, um. For a, for a, for a, for a, if it was where you're proposing. We'd literally be looking at our neighbor's backyard while we're on our deck.
Wait a minute, the pool is ten feet nine inches away from the house.
And look how close it is to the stairs too. So this, Amanda, could you repeat that again, what makes it attached?
We're looking at it right now.
We're looking at it, alright, it's, alright, now I have a comma problem. Any accessory building or structure, comma, including a garage that is less than ten feet from a principal structure on the lot. No comma, shall be considered attached to the principal structure. If it's less than ten feet, it's attached, if it's not less than ten feet, it's not attached, and this is ten feet nine.
And nine.
So it's not attached.
Do we even need a permit then?
I don't think he does, because.
I think the, it comes down to the deck being put there, so the deck is considered a structure. And it's now by extension attached to the pool.
Wasn't.
But the deck is not attached.
It's attached to.
But if the deck isn't physically attached to the pool.
Yeah, there's like a gap between them.
In that case, the set of stairs is attached.
Feet of the house, it's not attached to the deck.
So in that case, the stairs are attached.
To.
To the pool.
Are they? Are they?
Well, according to what you said, it's closer than ten feet.
What stairs?
Well, what makes it attached to the pool again?
Any accessory dwelling or structure.
The deck itself being attached to the pool, so you can go in and out of the pool.
It's not attached to it physically, it's just next to the pool. It'll be a couple inches.
Double check with.
You know what I mean, cause then the stairs would be considered attached.
This is saying, I mean, I can only inter-, and I'm a lawyer, I, I can only interpret the bylaws the way they're written. And that's what we're trusted to do. Um, and according to this, I, I do agree that it's a structure, a pool is a structure, not that other one. But only structures that are less than ten feet from the principal structure are considered attached to inherently.
So the stairs are less than ten feet?
What stairs?
Right, I think the stairs are.
Are you talking about the existing stairs?
No, you're talking about the existing stairs? I don't care about the existing stairs.
I know, but if you're gonna, if we're gonna say that the deck that he's building's gonna be attached, cause it's less than ten feet.
Is the deck that he's building attached to those stairs?
No, no, what I'm saying is, maybe I'm confused, what, what we're calling attached to the pool.
Yeah.
What are we considering attached to the pool? Why are we considering this deck attached?
There's two meanings of the words attached, you're thinking physical attachment. I'm thinking, uh, the bylaws are, are talking about legal attachment, if it's within ten feet, it's considered legally attached. Even if it's not physically attached.
Set of stairs are within ten feet.
I think those stairs are attached, they're just not encroaching on any of those dimensions.
I'm using the attach in a legal form.
Yeah.
The stairs are within ten feet.
The only piece of this project that violates the setback is the pool itself.
Correct.
But he got a permit for it, so I'm not concerned about that violation itself. The argument, or the, the, the problem is that when it was rejected, it was because they were considering that adding a deck to it. Turned it into a structure that is attached. I, I, I don't understand the logic of why it became a problem, honestly.
I've, right, I've heard in this conversation that you don't need a permit, that it, it may not need a variance, that it.
We're talking, we're talking through this.
Right, so from your expertise to me go, just going through the process of trying to do it the right way.
Yeah.
I mean, for me, I defer to what your ultimate decision is, but it seems like it is a technicality. And I feel like if, if we were to do the deck first, and no going into where the pool needed to be. We would have put the pool where it needed to be, and since the pool was permitted, and we.
When you got the pool permit, did you tell them that you eventually intended to do a deck?
At that point, we didn't know, um, there's, I mean, there's some, some reasons for the deck. That I, I really, for, for health reasons, that I, I didn't want, I don't wanna make really public, but that went into the, the idea of. Why we wanted to go with the deck.
What, what, what I've been doing here is trying to interpret the bylaws correctly, but in a way that we can help you.
Right, yeah, understood completely.
So, um. So, um.
Did you, you understand what I'm saying?
I don't know, this is ten feet.
If we're gonna call anything close to the pool.
I think that's what he's trying to say.
The permit was given to him, which he should have got a variance in the first place.
No, these ones, I think.
Oh, the stairs that are there right now.
Cause the stairs would be considered attached, within ten feet.
Yeah, but I think we're also a little confused about if a ten feet thing applies to decks, or if it's just like a physical. Envelope of the house.
I mean.
The deck itself is fine. What makes it not fine is that they're considering the pool to be part of it.
A pool by itself would have been okay, but now we're.
So it sounds like what really needs to happen is the deck just needs to be a little short of the actual pool, so it's not physically touching.
It's not gonna be touched.
Right, and it wouldn't be physically touching anyways, to me, I don't know, that doesn't seem like. Yeah, I don't think it's a problem.
That's why I asked you, what is considered attached? Is it ten feet?
If the, if the, the pool being within ten feet is considered attached to.
Of the house.
Attached to the house.
It is, it is within ten feet of those stairs.
The stairs, stairs don't count, stairs don't count, the structure.
It's.
The foundation of the house.
Not ten point nine.
Yeah, but if we put a deck, that's not the foundation of the house.
That also doesn't count.
So.
Right.
What are we getting a variance for?
That's my question, that's what I'm, that's what I'm. Getting to here.
Yeah.
If the structure.
I see what you mean with house now.
Okay, if the pool is not attached to the deck physically. Then it doesn't become part of the deck's structure. And it does not create a non-conformity. Under the way I am interpreting these bylaws. Which everybody seems to.
Agree with.
Agree with. Possibly Amanda, but.
I was just sharing the information, I don't necessarily disagree.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah.
And in that case, you do, we do not need to allow a variance because you do not need to have a variance. And we've done that before in past cases, not sure if you were on it then. We've had cases before where it, the those corner lot cases, that we had a couple of a few years ago. Where we decided that you don't need to request a variance because the way we're defining this, you don't violate it.
Okay.
Yeah, Si, Si, Si has seen this one before probably, but he's retired.
Should we issue a fine?
Yeah, that's, that's what we should do, so.
Carefully worded.
Yeah, let me puzzle this through. Okay, um I move that the. Z B A make a finding that no. Variance is necessary for the plot plan and the plan that has been um included in this application. Because the pool is not going to be physically attached to the deck. And it is not considered attached to the house in itself because it is more than ten feet away. Therefore, the pool. Does does not cause a problem um to the um construction of this deck. And the deck itself does not need a variance, it conforms.
Second.
That's good, uh before we vote, actually, can I just read all the letters?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Got carried, appreciate it. So the signatures that were collected at application are. Did you just wanna read, just wanna read the video, the transcript while I try to find the signatures to see if you read this?
The 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 transcript of the um, rather, the summary of the video that was submitted. Um Valerie and Michael Walsh submitted a video testimonial. Saying that they are the property owners located at twenty two Riverside Drive, direct abutting neighbors to twenty six Riverside Drive. They apologize, they're unable to attend the in-person meeting on Tuesday, May sixth, and we're hoping the zoning board appeals would take in consideration their video testimonial. They have known Chris and Lisa for over two years of living in the neighborhood and are one hundred percent in support of their new deck project. And anything else they might wanna do, if the board has any questions, they noted they could be reached and they gave their phone numbers.
Okay, and in addition to that, we also have a signed letter um. From a number of the neighbors in support of this project, um. I'm gonna do my best reading this cursive here, uh so it's Joe and Dolores Pessello at thirty two Riverside Drive. Matt and.
Justina.
Justina, thank you very much, twenty nine Riverside Drive, uh Tim and Chris Kelly, fifty six for sunny, sunny side drive. Um Chris and Maria Coltoni, Coltoni, thank you, at twenty five Riverside Drive, uh Valerie Wallen.
Uh Valerie, Valerie and Mike Walsh.
Walsh, okay, at twenty two Riverside Drive, um and they all signed a letter in support, um okay.
Um and just note, um oh, well, well, let's vote.
Okay, yeah, so all in favor of the motion?
Aye. Just note, though, that it it is a condition that they not be attached.
Right, understood, going into the whole thing.
I did have one question with the. Their original permit, call it a letter of denial, is that, can that now be? But can that permit the other that I told still?
Sure, so typically what will happen is we have to issue the findings, we have about two weeks to draft that, send that out, the twenty day appeal period. And then once we, once the appeal period is over, if no one has any objections. Then you can come in and get a certified copy from the town clerk, and then you register that with the registry of deeds. And bring a copy of that back to the building permit and then Ken can work with you to. Change it from a letter of denial to whatever actual building permit you actually need.
I'll vote, like this was the this, the decision, but the fact that that like no variance was needed, like that's still. I guess what I'm, what am I logging with the registry of deeds?
Sure, so it's the decision, so there's a twenty day appeal period for the decision, so like if one of your butters, they had a problem. With it, they could file like a grievance, but once that twenty day appeal period is done, then you can pick that up.
Most likely.
Typically ends up coming pretty close to like the next meeting, so sometime around June, we have about four. Roughly fourteen days to draft it and post it and send it out, we try to get done as quick as can, as we can. So once it's posted, I usually will go make a note in the portal. When it's posted that I uploaded um a copy of it, when you can pick it up and then like the next step from there. Yeah.
Awesome, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have something you're gonna say?
No.
Okay, um minutes from last week?
Last month?
Month, last month.
I had um. A spelling.
Also.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Yeah.
I just had a spelling mistake on uh Everett's last name, there's no E at the end, just cross it out for you.
Oh, so I always add E, it's Everett's name, the extra E at the end.
And I wasn't at the last meeting, so.
Yeah.
Who to approve as a man?
All in favor?
Great, on that decision, I think it's the right one because. You know how some pool have those little trees close to the meeting?
Yeah, let's close the meeting.
Did you close, I thought you closed.
Uh yeah, uh any other business?
No, who to adjourn, second.
All in favor? All right, great.